Okay, I'd like to call the work session of July 3rd to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez here. Brennaman?
Here.
Haley? Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
You have a quorum.
This time I'd like ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Rose, I move to approve tonight's agenda for the work session.
Wait a second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brennaman?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a board update and GM update. Do any of the board members have anything that they?
My meeting's not till Monday. We're now developing finance.
The time is okay. I'll hold all my comments until we get to the work session.
Okay.
About time to get through tonight's work session agenda. So next on the agenda is continuation of the IRP discussion. So, good gentlemen from Black and Beach, if you want to reintroduce yourself.
Dr. Gary Willmuss. I've started at Black and Beach in 92. So this is my 32nd year. This primarily the work I've been doing over that time is performing planning studies for utility clients. And my name is Chuck Poston. I've been at Black and Beach for just a couple of years and come from a background in utilities and utility regulation.
So before we get started, I guess I'll first ask if the board has any questions from the last meeting that you may want to address before we proceed on tonight.
Questions regarding the IRP?
Yes.
I do not at the time.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to Gary or?
Okay, Chuck is presenting. I didn't know who was leading. Alrighty. Since you advanced to the next slide. This afternoon, we're going to be going over just a few items, continuing on from our discussion. The last time we were here, we'll revisit our analytical framework to where we are in the process, talk about our capacity requirements in the base case, spend some time looking at different resource alternatives we consider in the IRP model. The capital cost assumptions that go with those different alternatives. We'll talk about the initial base case results and then have time at the end to talk about project schedule. Okay, analytical framework. Again, just to revisit, this is a repeat of our last discussion. We are still in the portfolio development process. We've gone through our determination of need, our scenario development, and now we are using our capacity expansion model to develop portfolios to examine. Today specifically, we're going to be talking about our base case, scenario one. Okay. Moving right into it. Apologize for all the numbers on the screen, but the needs for scenario one, base case, are driven by requirements to maintain sufficient margins for firm capacity. So as a first step for that, we put together a simple spreadsheet to estimate the timing and magnitude for that need of firm capacity between now and 2043. And that's what we have at the top of the slide. All those numbers in there. Each of the existing power plants and purchase power agreements that BPU has contributes to its overall firm capacity amount. And what that does for us is, once we know how much firm capacity is available, we go back to the load forecast that we discussed last time and look at the peak load forecast for each year of the planning horizon. BPU has an obligation within the SPP market to not only be able to cover its own peak load, but because of that, plus an additional 15%. We calculate the, that planning reserve margin, find the difference between that, how much firm capacity is available, and that gives us our, either our surplus or our deficit. At the bottom of the slide, we've got just a simple graph showing a summary of the firm capacity needs looking out the next 20 years. As we look at this, we can see that through 2037, the needs are fairly low. But by 2038, due to the assumed end of the Bowersock and Zimmerman Bend purchase power agreements, there's a noticeable increase in firm capacity needs. I'll step back a moment and say, for the purposes of the base case, in that upper table, you can see the gray boxes. For each resource listed, for those purchase power agreements that have the gray boxes, that is the scheduled end of the current contract. So we're assuming that that contract will end as is currently written out. We do assume that the SWAPA and WAPA high-stakes contract do continue through the end of the period, but that the others are allowed to expire in accordance with their current terms. So the takeaway here is that 2038 is an important year and that in the, I'd say near to medium term, there are not large demands, largest, sorry, large deficits forecast for firm capacity at BPU. Firm capacity needs, where we do see a deficit, those have to be met by choosing from the defined resource alternatives that we've placed in the model. If we could, first of all, before we move on, do we have any questions?
Yes.
There's a drop off after 2026 with Nierman 1, similar drop off with Nierman 4, and then also Dogwood. Why are those projections going down after 2027 or 2026?
There is a change in how SPP is accrediting
Thank you.
thermal resources. In fact, firm capacity needs are a topic of great interest within SPP, not just for BPU, but for all of its load-serving entities. A lot of folks are going to be coming up against this, you know, same, having these same thoughts, and there are a lot of participants who are in not as good a position in the near term.
Just to clarify then, there's no, we're not expecting a drop off in actual performance from those sites. It's just the calculation changes when we hit that year?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. So our resource alternatives that we included in the model. The first and I guess simplest resource alternative or first alternative source of firm capacity is a capacity purchase within the market. Within the market, market participants can enter into agreements between themselves to buy and sell the rights to firm capacity. And that's, you know, not including the energy perhaps from a resource, but just its firm capacity attribute. When small amounts of firm capacity are needed, this is a, an option where BPU can have a contract with another entity, buy those rights and then have that capacity credited to BPU. Within the model, we allow up to 20 megawatts of firm capacity to be purchased for any one year with a one-year term. We currently have it set to where it has to buy a minimum of 10 megawatts in a block initially, and then above 10 megawatts to combine one megawatt increments up to the full 20 megawatt limit.
When you say we allow?
That's the model setup. It's just an assumption within the model.
Thank you.
You know, the, the decision about how much and when to buy capacity on the market is something would, I would defer to your staff to talk about in greater depth and as far as the comfort levels, about how much and when to buy availability. But in our discussions with them, we found this to be a reasonable set of assumptions for the modeling. You know, with, again, we look at the megawatts needed for capacity in the long term and in the next 20 years, and it's only 51 megawatts. It's not, in the grand scheme of things, a huge amount. But we also don't want to create a situation where one will become over-reliant on someone else's capacity through these contracts and not have, you know, in-house capacity secured through something more long-term. But because we limited in the model to 20 megawatts, that takes us back to that 2038 year where we see that need for capacity jump due to the expiration of some of the purchase power agreements. Starting in 2038, firm capacity needs cannot be met with purchase capacity alone. Some other option has to be chosen in addition to that to make up for the firm capacity needs.
Yeah, basically the firm capacity available purchases between 10 and 20 megawatts in one megawatt increments. The thinking was if you went less than that, it may be more costly with regards to the price in dollars per kilowatt month because of the paperwork and getting, signing into a contract and getting into that relationship. The thinking was then, you know, 10 megawatts would be the minimum and then we could pull up one megawatt increments up to 10.
What's the rationale with the 20-megawatt cap, especially since one of the factors that's, you know, puts us in the deficit is losing a 30-megawatt purchase agreement? Are we assuming that we couldn't, at that time, make up that third, full 30-megawatts with another purchase agreement?
Yeah, I think one of those considerations is the availability of that capacity purchase from a neighboring NCP entity within SPP to do that. The other thing is kind of the risk associated with doing that, getting that capacity purchase and just thinking that may not be available. So we didn't want to plan on that. Certain that that capacity that was available.
Presumably everyone in the SPP is going to have to find excess capacity on the same timeline Right. or in similar timelines.
Yeah, I don't think it was the, the, the need is until later on, a larger amount of capacity and thinking is the capacity is getting tighter and tighter as time goes on with NCP. Currently, people have some capacity available that they'd be willing to sell to BPU, but in the future, we think that's less likely. So.
Thank you.
And because of that scarcity you mentioned, what we've got up on the screen there in our table is our assumption for price increases over the next 20 years. We assume that there will be an increase in nominal terms of 5% for a year, which, within the model, we do everything in 2024 real dollars, non-inflation adjusted. And so we brought that back down to bring it to 2024 real dollars. You can see the column on the far right are the prices that we're assuming. So every year you want to continue buying paper capacity or doing capacity purchases in the market, it's going to get more and more expensive every year. That's what we're assuming. All right, next slide. So like we said, purchase capacity will only take us so far because of our assumptions on limitations. So beyond that, there needs to be actual generation, you know, procured. And so within the model, these are the expansion candidates that we have chosen. There's, it's a mix of large capacity, small capacity, thermal resources, and by thermal, I mean burning, we're burning fuel to generate power, natural gas primarily, thermal resources, renewable resources such as solar wind, and then also we have an option for energy storage resources, battery storage. So all of those exist within the model as potential options that can be picked to meet those firm capacity needs in a economic way. We'll also mention that the model is allowed to build multiple units of these different options. For example, with the solar farm option, the maximum capacity there is 25 megawatts. The model is not limited to building 25 megawatts of solar. It just builds in 25-megawatt increments. Like you build 25, 50, 75, 100, you know, 150, 200 megawatts, whatever it would need, but it has to build them in blocks of 25 megawatts. Some additional information here, if we look at the top four options there, they're in no particular order, just happen to be that way. Those are all derivatives of a combustion turbine design, the LM 6000 PF+. Top option, the 1x0, that's a simple cycle unit, a lower max capacity. And then the next three options are that same unit, but built into a combined cycle design. So higher capacities and those operate with a higher unit efficiency as well due to their design. There's a biomass option. It is limited biomass. We're not expecting to build in large amounts simply because of its nature. You know, you wouldn't build 300 megawatts of biomass where you could build that for a natural gas unit. Next option, labeled percentage of a new combined cycle facility. That is like what BPU currently has with the Dogwood plant, where you could look at buying into a percentage of a, of a new or existing combined cycle facility in 50-megawatt increments. The rice unit, that's a reciprocating internal combustion engine, natural gas fueled. Think of it as the engine from a gasoline-powered car, just very, very large. Also included an option for a large, simple-cycle combustion turbine. It's kind of a complement to the smaller, simple-cycle at the top of the table. The solar options, you see there are two there. They have identical physical characteristics as far as operation. They're modeled separately simply because of the existence of different types of tax credits that are available for that type of construction. Production tax credits are earned based on the amount of energy a facility produces where investment tax credits are a percentage, based on a percentage of the facility's construction cost. They're modeled separately because you can't claim both at the same time. So it gives the ability to pick and choose based on the value of those tax credits. Battery storage options, four-hour battery. And by a four-hour battery, we give it a max capacity of 25 megawatts and so its energy storage capacity would be 100 megawatt hours. So the idea is it could operate for four hours at its maximum capacity to, you know, discharge that energy that it has stored up. And finally, we've got a wind farm option as well. Any questions of the options we have on the table?
Just no dollars associated with it.
Yes, we, we've got a couple of slides. We'll talk about the relative costs.
Can you speak briefly to battery storage adds to our firm capacity? We're not actually producing more energy with batteries. So can you talk about how that's accomplished?
Sure. Of course, as you pointed out, a battery is not a generator. It does not make energy on its own. Instead, it would buy energy from the market during times of low demand and low price, and then store that and then discharge that energy during times of high demand. And that's where its value is in terms of firm capacity lies, its ability to time-shift
Sure.
energy from periods of surplus to periods of shortage.
Is that something, maybe this is impossible to bridge back to this point, but is that something that more utilities invest in that have an impact on the marketplace fluctuations?
It could, yes.
You know, shortening the, or lessening the distance between the highest prices and the lowest prices?
It could. We were just talking about this before the meeting, talking about the amount of the different renewables that exist in the SPP market currently. Right now, there's about 34 gigawatts of wind operating in SPP. There's about one gigawatt of solar energy in the market and about 12 megawatts of storage. So a factor of 1,000. So storage has not yet reached a lot of parts of this market. It's an opportunity people are looking at, and we expect there to be a larger build-out in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, if more and more renewable generation comes on at the grid, then it makes the batteries more valuable because the sun tends to, solar tends to generate here in the daylight hours and the wind tends to blow, you know, same times around. So, yeah.
I think there are probably a lot of opportunities for storage in the years to come.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would you go back to the 100 megawatts of storage?
Yes.
Yeah. Would you explain that again one more?
Sure. So.
On the battery storage?
We give the battery a maximum capacity of 25 megawatts, which is the amount of energy that can output at any one time.
Okay.
And then it's a four-hour battery. So it can, it can discharge at that 25-megawatt level for four hours, which gives us the energy capacity of 100 megawatt hours.
Okay, I got it. I missed the 20.
I'm sorry, just to piggyback on that. How long, it can discharge for four hours? How long can it hold on to the bulk of that energy? Like, four hours of the output, at what point?
Like if you, if you turn it up on Sunday and you waited.
What's your, yeah, when do you fall off a cliff on your return on that?
There is a self-discharge rate associated with batteries. Gary, do you? I don't recall off the top of my head, something like a fraction of 1% per hour.
Okay.
But it, it does gradually discharge itself. So can't hold on to it.
Sure.
Right. And so, you know, the hope would be that, you know, for a, a battery installation, that it would be cycling frequently enough, you know, to show its value and its use, that that wouldn't be a, a large operation.
Sure.
But it is one. It definitely is. Move on back to the, yeah. So we've talked about the different units that can be added, but we also are accounting for units that can be retired. Within the model, we have said it so that, starting in 2028, all the existing fossil fuel-fired power plants like Nierman, Quandero, all of those, those are allowed to retire if economic condition warranted. If that's the case, the model will remove that facility from the simulation and replace it with a, a new source of generation and firm capacity. So it's, it's not being forced in the model, but it is being allowed. And so to more accurately represent some of the costs that we anticipate over the next 20 years, there was a lifecycle assessment that was done this spring for the Nierman and Quandero units, and those additional capital costs that were determined necessary to keep those units running during that 20-year period have been added into the model as an additional expense that goes into that calculation of whether or not the, it makes financial sense to keep them running.
What about reliability sense?
Well, the, the assumption is that those additional capital expenses are being used to maintain the reliability of those units during that time period.
And the federal state regulations won't have any variant on whether or not we maintain the fuel burning?
Not, not for the base case. We, we look at those in other scenarios. For this base case scenario, we assume status quo operation. But yes, those are, that is covered in other scenarios.
Thank you.
All right. So now we look at the different options we have in the model. We'll get to the capital cost assumptions that go with those different technologies. In general terms, Black and Beach, we assume a long-term decrease in the costs, capital costs associated with wind, solar, and storage technologies. As the technology improves, manufacturing improves, the efficiencies are gained, we think those capital costs will have a decline over the next 20 years. The capital cost for thermal generation technologies, the combustion turbines, the combined cycle units, rice units, those are assumed to be constant in, in real dollar terms. Those are mature technologies and we're just not anticipating any new large-scale efficiency gains that would cause those options to become cheaper over the long term. Anything they have there, Gary? All right. Alrighty. So on this slide, we've got a couple graphs. Start with the graph on the left. We have the curves representing the capital costs for wind, solar, and storage compared against the capital cost for kind of a mid-range combined cycle unit. There, that horizontal line in black is the combined cycle unit and you can see those decreasing costs for the wind, solar, and storage technologies. And you can see that, you know, over time, the wind, solar, and storage appears to get considerably less expensive on a capital cost basis than the traditional thermal technology. It does, but there's another aspect of this to consider in what we see on the chart on the right. Those are the same capital costs, but they have been adjusted by the effective load-carrying capacity and firm capacity factors associated with those technologies. And kind of what that is, the effective load-carrying capacity or ELCC quantifies the amount of load that a resource can reliably serve during peak hours. It's a measure of kind of the value, what, what percentage of that maximum capacity can be credited to BPU for firm capacity base, on a firm capacity basis. Each of these is going to be unique to the, the, the technology type. The numbers we've got here for wind has a 15% ELCC. Solar is at 62%. Storage is at 65%. And the combined cycle unit here is at 93%. So when you divide the capital costs by the ELCC value, you get the capital costs instead of dollars per kilowatt, you get it in terms of dollars per firm kilowatt. Practically what this means is things like if you want to build, if you want 100 megawatts of firm capacity and you achieve that through building a And you achieve that through building a uh, natural gas fired combustion turbine. You'll need to build something with little less than a hundred and ten megawatts to get credited back the hundred megawatts of firm capacity. If you want to get a hundred megawatts of firm capacity from a solar farm, you're gonna need to build a hundred and sixty megawatts. Of total capacity to get the hundred megawatts of firm capacity. Wind, you're gonna need to build six hundred and seventy megawatts. Of total capacity to get the hundred megawatts of firm capacity. And so, in fact, if you can notice on that graph, there is no line visible for the wind farm. It's off scale, it's around nine thousand dollars per kilowatt of firm capacity. And we, I go through all this simply because um, I wanted to. Make sure we answer any questions because we don't want to just assume that just because the uh, capital cost for a unit is low. That that's the whole story, there are other, other pieces of this um, to consider. Just from a construction standpoint and also an operational standpoint, um, when you build a unit, a, a solar unit. Um, you don't have to buy fuel for the solar farm. If you build the combined cycle unit, um, you do have to, you know, factor in those, you know, future operational costs. The natural gas doesn't come for free um, going forward, so each of these options has pros, cons. You know, operational benefits, operational drawbacks, and all of these factors working together. Uh, that's why we do the model, because sometimes it's a, it's a non-intuitive um, process, non-intuitive result.
Uh, my understanding, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here, all of our current wind generation is through purchase agreements, right? So when we're looking at this, this is talking about capital costs for wind, so would that be if we were to go build our own turbines? Or are we, is there purchase agreements captured in this in some way too?
The purchase agreements are also captured, um, because someone has to build the wind. Uh, and so the, 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 the cost of the PPA is gonna be uh, related to the capital cost for building the wind farm.
And that's partly under the assumption as, you know, demand for all these things goes up. The current number of turbines is not enough to fill that demand and therefore, any new contract would be. Accounting for more uh, capital costs on whoever's building the new turbines.
Uh, either that or uh, increased cost for PPAs due to, you know, people, you know, when a, when a contract expires. And uh, the wind farm owner renegotiates with a new client, um, you know, prices may reflect the, the current market value. Um, of those, of that energy.
I apologize, I probably continue to ask things that are, you know, layers removed from the modeling, but if I'm looking at this as someone who's. Solely in the wind farm business, these new standards are pretty terrible for my business model.
But it. It is and it isn't, uh, it depends on what the, the customer needs. If the customer needs energy, wind farms can provide a lot of energy. If the customer is, you know, in need of firm capacity, it's, it's, it has, you know, positives and negatives. It depends on what you need.
That, that makes sense, I appreciate that, I guess, um, and again, this is the part that's difficult to model. But if they're taking such a hit on being able to provide firm capacity, it makes one wonder if. That's gonna actually lower demand for that new wind energy because everyone's trying to hit their new capacity limits and. They're gonna be pursuing all the other options we're looking at that, you know, make it onto the chart.
The other thing to consider is uh, there's thirty four gigawatts of wind already in SPP and as for these types of renewable resources. You always, you know, it, it, it's always gonna be most advantageous to be early. Um, you know, that, that, that first hundred megawatts of wind um, has a different benefit. Than the, you know, three thousandth megawatt of wind or the thirty thousandth megawatt of wind.
Thank you.
And, and just one, add one thing to that is, is, it's not only utilities that are buying these products, right? So on our, on our Simran Ben product, Google is buying a large portion of that, on our Alexander product, Yahoo buys a portion of that. They don't have any load serving needs, uh, they do it because they have their own agendas that are associated with clean energy.
Yeah.
Um, and therefore they just have different requirements that they're trying to be from us load serving entities, us utilities. We do have those agendas and so therefore, as your point is correct, is it does make it more challenging as wind going forward, so.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Uh, I think the need for capacity is driven by, by the, the requirement to serve your peak demand. So that's basically the reserve margin of fifteen percent is based on your, 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 your peak demand. And so, the reason the ELCC is lower, and that's what's driving up the cost. Is because there is so much wind generation that tend to generate at same hours and those hours happen to be typically when the peak demand does not occur. For example, the wind tends to blow the most seasonally in the spring and fall, that's typically when the demand is, is lower because there's no air conditioning or heating load. Um, the, the wind tends not to blow so much during the summer. And it, it, especially during, in the afternoon when you get your peaks, that's why they value um, the, the, it's contribution to the, the firm. The, the reserve margin requirements at such a low value is because it's not there to serve the peak and that's so striving the, the need for capacity.
And if you're in California, for example, you see the exact opposite equation, right? There's so much solar on the, the system today that it's curtailing all that solar because there's just more solar than actual load to consume it. So, it's kind of, we have one challenge here, California has a different challenge there, so.
Yeah, so what happened in California is actually with all that solar generation that is occurring at what was originally the peak demand period. Your peak demand period net of solar generation moves to another hour, so even if you add another megawatt of wind, it really doesn't have any value. With regards to serving energy at the peak demand period.
Anything else? Alright, let's go to the next slide. I don't have any graphs for these because uh, these are the, the capital costs for thermal generation. And as we said, we assume them to be constant in real dollar terms, so it'd just be flat lines, but. Um, one thing we can see here is, in general, capital costs tend to trend downward as maximum capacity increases. Building a smaller capacity unit, it can be more expensive on a per kilowatt basis. But it's a smaller unit and so the total capital cost would still be lower. Any other questions about these uh, values here?
Do we see, uh, sorry, man, need to look ahead on this, um. This is just on new thermal generation, do we see similar numbers on battery or? Solar capacity or?
Uh, that was the previous slide, um, those graphs.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, it's presented in a different way.
Thank you.
Uh, we have both the, the capital cost in twenty twenty four real dollars. And then capital cost in twenty twenty four real dollars adjusted for the, the firm capacity.
Thank you.
Alright, let's go to the next slide. Um, so with all these things we've discussed uh, under consideration, um, next slide. We want to talk about um. Our base case and our basic, our base case results, again, this is scenario one, out of a total of ten different scenarios and. Um, what you mentioned earlier about uh, the scenarios, including uh, some of the environmental considerations we have. Uh, scenarios two, three and four, those will look different, uh, those have different assumptions about operation of, of uh, Nierman Creek. And uh, we'll have different uh, anticipate to have much different results than the base case. Uh, that assumes a status quo operation for these units. Again, this is just uh, tonight talking about scenario one base case, scenarios two through ten. Um, are going to be variance on the base case with different assumptions, um, you know, unique to each scenario. F, the next slide. As we talked about at the beginning, the need for firm capacity is uh, mild until twenty thirty eight. With that uh, limited firm capacity needs in the near to medium term. The, there is no need for an immediate large investment in a new generating facility. The model, it picks um, the capacity purchases as the uh, best option for meeting those needs. Up until twenty thirty eight, uh, starting in twenty thirty eight though. As that uh, need for additional firm capacity exceeds that twenty megawatt limit you have uh, modeled for the purchase capacity. There has to be some new generating facility added. But still, in the absolute sense, they are fairly small needs. And so the uh, smaller capacity options are preferred by the model. It's not gonna build a two hundred and fifty megawatt unit to meet the capacity needs of fifty megawatts. It'll pick the smaller capacity options. Also, we found that with the base case assumptions, uh, none of the existing fossil fuel fired power plants. Uh, being recommended to retire during the next twenty years, even with the additional capital costs. From the uh, life assessment report, it was showing that it was uh, reasonable to, to continue making those investments. And continue the operation of those units. Next slide please. So. On the left, um, we have the results in terms of install, total install capacity. You can see in blue, um, purchase capacity, uh, taking care of needs through the twenty thirty seven. And then, starting in twenty thirty eight, um, total of seventy five megawatts of solar. Is being added to the portfolio, uh, fifty megawatts in twenty thirty eight with an additional twenty five megawatts in twenty thirty nine. If you look on the right side of the uh, slide, second graph. Those uh, installed capacity amounts have been multiplied by the ELCC numbers, the effective load carrying capacity numbers. To give you an idea of how much firm capacity is being added uh, relative to the firm capacity need. Um, there on that black line. So, you can tell that, you know, that first ten megawatt block of purchase capacity. Will carry through, uh, take care of needs through twenty thirty seven and then twenty thirty eight. That's when the actual uh, additional physical generated capacity gets added.
Is there a phase in for twenty thirty eight, is that why it starts a little lower and then jumps up and we have makeup for it with the extra purchase capacity?
Uh, yes, and that's, you, you point out a, an interesting, uh, I guess artifact of the model. It'll always try to choose um, the cheapest option in any, you know, given year. And what you can see is, in twenty thirty eight. Because it can buy up to the twenty megawatts of uh, purchase capacity. It can just barely build the fifty megawatts of solar. Take that, you know, fraction of, of the firm capacity, add almost its full allotment of paper or purchase capacity. And just make that uh, uh, fifteen percent capacity margin. Then in the next year, um, it can't quite make it and so then it has to build that additional twenty five megawatts. In the real world, that's probably not the decision that would get ma, get made. And that's actually an excellent uh, place to talk about, you know, what's the role of this model? Again, the model is a tool, the model does not make decisions, uh, people will make decisions. And so a person would look at that and say, well, that's what the model is saying, but really it might make more sense. To do the full seventy five megawatts in twenty thirty eight. And before go to that, uh, you know, a larger additional uh, purchase capacity amount.
Yeah, basically it might be some economies of scales associated with putting in seventy five megawatts of solar generation in twenty thirty eight versus fifty in twenty thirty eight, twenty thirty nine. But with the way the model's set up, it's, it's basically the price for twenty five megawatts.
Yeah.
Again, fifty megawatts, quite cheaper, you can give the model infinite number of options, you could potentially, if you wanted to, to go into that level of detail. Give it a twenty five megawatt option, a fifty megawatt option, a seventy megawatt option, if there's cost differential there, but that's kind of decision.
That can be made after the fact.
Sure. So you, you, that's a, that's a good point you made that it's, it looks weird, that's because it's just a, a quirk of the model, you know, in a particular year.
Presumably in actual numbers, ten years from now, we're either gonna be on one side or the other of that gap by a bigger margin and then it, it's all moved.
Right. Um, any additional questions about these initial results?
Yeah, I think kind of the bottom line is over through that twenty thirty seven period, capacity purchase is the best option now. Is there an entity that has that excess capacity that is willing to sell to BPU at the price that, 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 that we estimated within this model?
Is there any advantage to starting those agreements before twenty thirty if we're anticipating the prices? Going up over the long term as those, as that demand rises? You know, I've, I've been like, signing a five year longer deal in twenty twenty five, do you get a better rate than waiting till twenty thirty? When you really need it to get up over that margin?
Yeah, that, that's all part of the discussion, so those, all those discussions that are, are going under, underway now, um. Again, we're all, we're all kind of battling the same position for the most part, a, a lot of us are in a pretty similar position. We're in a slightly better position than most, actually. Um, but that's exactly right, is, is, is can you contract for, for full term? Uh, are utilities willing to do so? Again, there's a lot of load growth potentially out there, whether that be data centers or other technologies that are coming. Um, and so a lot of utilities are a little bit skittish in terms of selling longer term product as well, so again, those are ongoing conversations. And the market is, is not as robust as the energy market is, it's all a, a telephone based game in terms of between all the hundred people in SPP. So you're, you're working with all these entities, but again, there's a lot of uh, I'll say entities such as the Yahoos, Googles, Amazons of the world. That don't need this product and, and can you work with those entities to, to utilize that in, in a better fashion than we have today? Um, so it'll be interesting next few years for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, another thing that might happen is, for example, another entity might be building a power plant to, 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 to increase their capacity. Um, and they might, you know, if you're aware of that, you might approach them and say, well, could you build it with ten more megawatts? I mean, it's gonna be cheaper for them because economies of scale and then you might be able to get that ten megawatts capacity or twenty megawatts or capacitor. Or thirty megawatts of capacity and sell the twenty megawatts capacity to somebody else until you need it later on, so those are all the dynamics associated. With, with, with getting into the contract and to get your capacity purchase.
Also, you know, you have, you know, potential opportunities where a Google or an Amazon or Walmart, um, you know, enters into a, a contract. With let's say a wind farm, um, they want the energy, they want the, the environmental energy aspects of that contract, they don't need the firm capacity. There may be, you know, opportunities, uh, you know, as, as a, people with different um, needs. Um, can help each other.
Sure.
And, and so as part of that, that's one of the things we're exploring with that green rider piece, uh, so that's, that's part of that equation. And those entities that want that green energy and have those, that need for those recs and, and so forth is. The BPU could take the capacity portion and provide some benefit, cross benefit between the two of us, so. Um, again, we're going through that process today to talk, talk to those larger entities that may be interested. Um, so that's an avenue that we may see play out over the next year or two, uh, that would fit. Instead of the paper capacity, we may actually bring some online, uh, that meets that as us taking the capacity portion and, and those entities taking the energy portion.
Anything else? Alright, if we'll go to the next slide, uh, I'll let Andrew and company, uh. Uh, they, if they have any comments on uh, future, on schedules, meeting, uh, those topics.
So this is the same timeline that uh, was presented at the last session. Uh, obviously today is the July third session. Uh, currently we're scheduled to do a presentation at the July seventeen board meeting. And then we anticipate another workshop meeting on August seventh with reporting all the modeling compilation at that time. Uh, and then ask for approval there late in August. Uh, and then ask for approval there late in August. Um, and so just wanted to provide that and make sure that that was still, still a good timeline for, for everyone. Um, we, today, we have received one comment from the Sierra Club. And again, we have presented a questionnaire to our larger uh customers. Regarding, again, it, it's a number of things, but it's green rider, it's those type of things. And we've received one of those questionnaires back.
Can I ask a question? Um, so the modeling completion on the 31st will be the other eight, nine scenarios?
Yes, that'll be all the scenarios presented on the August 7th workshop, yeah.
Okay, so we've taken the, almost an hour tonight to go through one scenario. And we're going to look at nine more scenarios in a workshop. Are we starting it at noon? I mean, and I'm not being, I'm, I, I mean, thi- this is a lot, obviously, to take in, right? And we are not experts in this. And to look at that and look at an approval or tentative approval date of August 21st is daunting to me. I, I mean, I'm just being honest. So I didn't know how long we expected the other nine scenarios to go.
Well, one, um, they, it likely won't be as in depth. The, the base case is, is building everything and then obviously the scenarios are, are pieces off of that. But absolutely, depending on how you guys want to see them or the timeline, um. We, we can do whatever makes sense for you guys. This is really something for you guys to kind of work through it. This is a living, breathing document to us on the operation side. But for you guys, it's about absorbing this stuff. And so whatever works best for you guys, um, within that timeframe that worked for you. So if you think more meetings, if you think us spread them out, again, that's not my choice. That's between. I'll say the parties be so, uh, we're, I'll say Black and Beach and myself are open to whatever collectively you guys decide.
Well, and I don't know how other board members feel about it, but I just am looking at that. It's daunting to me, so.
Well, it is daunting, um, but I'm looking at it, the fact that it's just a plan.
That's what I'm thinking too.
It's just a plan and uh plans change according to what happens. And, and so we don't know exactly what's actually going to happen, but we just know that the plan leads to, to a particular uh outcome. To where we're, we're providing um quality, efficient, uh, reliable. And the least expensive, hopefully. Efficient uh energy as we have in the past. Um, so, um, I don't know, uh, if, if it would benefit us to. To, um, to see all the details. Uh, give, give long details. If you think that that's going to be beneficial, then let's, let's, uh, let's look at that.
I think we do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, I was going to say the same thing. I mean, at this point, it is basically a plan. I'll go back and recap what Chuck said earlier. BPU, the board management is not making any concrete decisions on what we're doing going forward. It's, it's just laying out, here's a number of scenarios that can, that could potentially face us. Short term and long term. But the, but the IRP will give us a lot of flexibility to go in multiple directions based on. Economics, based on environmental concerns, regulation and other factors that may come up. So it's a plan that tries to incorporate all of that. And it's also a plan that kind of leaves BPU, future decision-making, open for adjustments wherever needed.
Bill, I think this came up last time, but we're not, there's not a hard deadline of the 21st. If we met on the 7th and, you know, even if we did a two-hour work session and said, oh, gosh, we only made it through half of them. If we needed to push everything back half a month, are there any?
You can do that.
Consequences to that?
No. You know, I think Andrew spoke to one of our requirements is to get it done this year. So, yeah, we can, we can adjust the schedule. Push it out a month, push it out a month and a half if you want.
And what did you say earlier about the next three scenarios?
Um, scenarios two, three and four, uh, deal with uh environmental, uh, pending environmental uh regulations. Their uh potential impacts.
Okay. And post Chevron, there will be any, so.
Yeah.
Frustrating.
It is a rapidly changing regulatory landscape.
Well said.
BP does seem to be in a good position with regards to not hard pressed to make a decision right away because the capacity needs don't start till. 2030, so you have a little bit of time to explore the options with regards to other capacity purchase opportunities available. If not, um, start planning to do, you know, something else, you know, and, and we can do those types of scenarios like with, you know, built some solar. Hopefully, or, or if somebody's building batteries and have excess capacity, they want to offer you some of that, that can go towards your, your, your capacity requirements. But it seems like there's, you know, there's a little bit of time. You just want to, want to know ahead of time, you know, what might BPU be facing under these different scenarios? Um, and you know, the base case anyway. You have time to kind of analyze a situation in detail and look and see what, 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 what options are available to me. Uh, to meet these requirements. Um, we've identified the capacity purchase at price that we think it's going to be available is the best option. So as you hear of people that have excess capacity or maybe another utility is planning on building um some generation. My inquiry, well, do you have some excess capacity that you can sell us to us starting in 2030 to meet our needs? Um, so those are the type of things that I think BPU could, you know, keep their, their, their. Just keep track of what your neighbors are doing or other people in SPP are doing.
And I would say this too, uh. Before any final decisions are made on future generation, the board will be involved. I hope would be involved in that, uh, beyond this year. And if you looked at the schedule for when somebody's re- retirements may happen. Or when other generation may be needed, there's a greater likelihood we'll be doing another IRP update before that even happens. So it's not like everything rests on what we're doing today and this is. Estance for the next 15 years, we're gonna, this is, we're gonna be repeating this exercise or the utility repeating this exercise. But went through this and, and we'll clear understanding of where these regulations are. As we approach the next IRP and what other, what other changing landscape is out there.
How quickly after the 31st could sort of the presentation of those other scenarios in the model? Be in our email inbox if we want to have some time on our own to, you know, dig into a bit of it. So it's not all happening just in that next work session.
We can, uh, let me ask, how much time would you like?
Well, I mean, ideal to me would be August 1st, but I realize that might be a, a quick turnaround, at, at least a couple of days, I guess.
Okay, I, that should be, um.
And that's just me trying to carve out time in my own schedule to make sure I've got time to do my homework ahead of time.
And, um, you know, again. At least on Black and Beach, I were flexible. If, if things need to be pushed back, uh, to give folks more time, that's perfectly fine with us. We can accommodate whatever schedule, uh, you need. Uh, but your point is taken that, uh, to provide you with the, um, information. Earlier before the, the next meeting.
I'm trying to proactively make sure that I'm not single-handedly, uh, prolonging the next meeting and spilling us into a second one. So whatever I can do to, you know, save my fellow board members that experience, I'd like to.
And Rob, the next, next slide is the last slide. Yeah, so let's, let's go to this schedule too, so you can see it both ways. The next, next board meeting will be, uh, public comments, where we'll open it up for. Public comments and we're still. Uh, requesting the public to send us their. Comments and questions to the, uh. Email address that we've, uh, we have out there. And, uh, and then we'll be reporting on some of that in the next, uh, next board meeting. But this would be a regular session. Discussion as opposed to a work session. And I'll, I'll get into some other conversations in the rivers when we get to the regular session about next, uh, the next board meeting.
Uh, can you elaborate on the Sierra Club's question?
Uh, they, they got a, a, a couple of comments. It's primarily geared towards, uh, that they would like to see it every year. Um, this performed, currently we perform this every five years. They would also like to incorporate, um, some of the. I'll say potential upcoming FERC rules or FERC rules that exist that don't necessarily exist for. For BPU specifically today, um, those around FERC Order 2222 and FERC Order 1920. Um, FERC Order 2222 is a demand response style approach. Uh, again, the nice thing about not necessarily needing steel in the ground day one. Is that it does, does provide flexibility as technology change and as, as we change. And so therefore, demand response may end up being a better proposal than current paper capacity. But again, as of today, uh, the BPU is not participating in FERC Order 2222. Uh, generally, only larger utilities are doing so today. Uh, those utilities that sell more than 4 million megawatt hours. Uh, the reason BPU doesn't participate today is because it's one of those programs that we want to see how well. Uh, the larger utilities adapt to that process because there are a lot of moving pieces, a lot of expenses associated with that. And so some of that is, I believe you're going to allow those larger utilities to, um. Create that standard function or flow, uh, to make sure that process works and, and works efficiently. So, um, I do anticipate that'll change over the handful of years, uh, but as of today, we, we don't participate. And most or all small utilities don't participate in that space. FERC Order 1920 is really about transmission planning.
Those requirements placed on most large utilities.
Yes, so the large utilities are required to participate in 2222. So Avergi, for example, is required to participate. Yes, and, and once you open the, the gate to FERC Order 2222, uh, you have to allow any participant outside vendor. To come in and, and do the demand response. Uh, so this could be any third party that, that wanted to come in and start impacting your, your load situation a little bit. So it is a little bit daunting to, to see, but again, we're going to watch to see how this flows through the different larger utilities. And how well that process improves. And it will improve, it just will, because it's, it's a new deal. FERC Order 1920 is really around transmission planning. That's really less about BPU. It's really more about SPP and the state rules in terms of how transmission planning goes about. There's going to be a lot of, I'll, I'll say a lot of stuff that goes through that. Less about BPU again and more about state law versus, uh, larger transmission planning. And so, um, that's, that's not a big piece necessarily to us directly, but it will be a big piece just in general in the grid. Um, so those were kind of the big things that they, they had pointed out. Um, they did also attach, um, their comments from the cost of service as well. But those were the same comments from the cost of service, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, since I think this is the last slide of schedule, so. We'll move on, uh. To the next topic, uh. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we met with the, uh. Economic Development Fund Committee. Which board members on that fund, may I ask? Sorry, which board members on that? Myself.
I am.
Rose and.
David.
David. Haley? Yeah.
Another board member.
These two, these two requests were presented to them and, uh, now we're just following our process on bringing it to the board.
Hey, um. Sure you all had an opportunity to review them. So I'm just going to go through pretty quick and then if you have any questions, and ask me. But the first one we'll get is the YLO. And that would be, uh, old YMCA. Building on 900 North 8th Street, which had been, um, rehab to senior living. It's 44 units over there, 44 lots. And this project was started before COVID and because of COVID, it was put on hold. So, uh, it's been completed now and it's probably. About, uh, this capacity is not quite full yet. Um, they started leasing, I think in April. And their request, their initial request, uh, was for 300. Uh, thousand is what they had asked. There were some recommendations and some, uh, changes, but well, after the, uh, committee met. And, uh, they proposed, uh, supporting an award of $100,000. So. Any questions on that?
Yeah, well, no, no question. Now I just wanted to say that I looked at both proposals. Initial proposal, I was very pleased with the fact that they provided their, their, uh, in order to participate, participate, participation. The other one did not, uh, I was wondering why they did not provide a percentage of my own registrations.
Oh, on the, um, Patisus?
Correct. As you said, we're equal opportunity employer. I mean, that's good. I mean, but I mean, I like to see the numbers. Uh, and I appreciate the fact that the YLOs did provide those numbers. But they did not provide.
Well, I could definitely go back and ask if you want that information.
Yeah, just, just to, just to have, have confirmation, just, you know, when we're giving out, 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 at our. Dollars, definitely we appreciate the development in northeast area, um. By that time period, um. But I, I like to know. Participation.
Okay. We can do that. Kind of, so there's no more questions on the Y. We will go to Patisus. And there.
I do that, I'm sorry. Why, why did we, why did we lower the amount request? That was, that was what I wanted to find out when we, maybe why did we lower the. Of the award or request. I think we, as a committee, we looked at, we looked at, we looked at it, we looked at the, how many, the number of units. Uh, what they're caught, what their initial, what their, what their cost was, what they've had, what they had put into it. And we felt that, uh, the 300,000 was, it was excessive. And after this discussion, we reached a figure of 100,000. Very good. And I, and I, and I did see the ROI. I really appreciate that. That was very important to me. I really appreciate you providing that as well. So that's. It's something we're, we're now adding on all the applications, uh. But I, I think, uh, what I had suggested to the board, to the committee rather, is. Is, I think having a little bit more guidelines in place would probably go a long ways towards helping to determine. Force comfort level deals around return on investment, return on what type of projects. The, the board was receptive towards approving funding for or, or not. Uh, this, I mean, for us, it is, you know, I'm always looking back at, at past actions the board have taken on some of these projects and say, okay, well. You know, when these, these type projects came forwards over the last 20 years, the board has kind of had a sense of, let's do this or do that. But the board has changed, okay, and the board will continue to change. So. I guess my recommendation is try to set some type of guidelines in place as to, uh. Uh, what you would be looking for. So we're not just, you know, if, I, I can make a recommendation. That recommendation could change significantly when that's okay. But, uh, it's just, uh, I guess for, for staff too is. If the board is dead set against going in certain directions, do you, you want us to continue to advance that or? And I'm, and I'm okay. I guess BP would be okay. Or, and I'm, and I'm okay, I guess BP would be okay.
Yeah, I I think it's very important that that we have from you and the staff, you know, your, your recommendation, guidelines by which you move and to make that make recommendations so that the board can have more informed.
Right.
I mean, I wish they, they're.
But what I look at is that return, okay, if we're spending these dollars, where is it going, and how long does it take to pay it off? And that is one key thing that I look at, that's one, one reason why I wanted to just have that in there. And, but also, again, a lot of, a lot of this recommendation is based on where the board has been over the years and what you've supported over the years.
I know in the past, the people that were coming to, the developers that were coming to ask for money, would come before the board and state their case. And I know Patrice does an excellent job of getting the information and presenting to us, but you probably remember that, Tom, where they present. It just makes a little bit different picture when they're trying to sell their idea to you. For me, I'm just speaking from experience.
And this is my first time on this consideration, and I appreciate the discussion that we have. And I was, we talked during this about what's around the area and similar to the YLOs. But the, our contribution was was for what's called the Boulevard, which is about two blocks, three blocks away, looking at other projects and what our contribution has been and what the ROI would been, whether it's for profit, whether it's market, whether the units are market or income adjusted. And so a criterion would have been helpful. I was, you know, new to this discussion. I thought it was interesting to look at how we came to the conclusion. But as you do see, there was a deduction to this, and don't want to jump on Patrice sharing, but the next one as well. Hopefully taking into account other factors.
The cottages, the Village West is a housing project. Their request is three hundred fifty thousand. The project will consist of two hundred and thirty one units of housing rentals just north of Kansas Speedway. It's a hundred and forty three duplexes and detached single family homes. And there is one, two, and three bedroom four floor plans. So it's a total of two hundred and thirty one units at market rate. And it needs tested an award amount of two hundred thousand. There were two that were, two board members that supported two hundred thousand from the committee.
Which was it? I know Tom was, am I the other board member?
No, you, you were, you dropped out.
Yeah, I know I had, so sorry.
You dropped out and David, and you came back in, and we never did get back to it.
Okay.
The conversation after you went, went after you dropped off the call for a point was there, there's two ways that they could get money. They can request an Economic Development Fund, you know, us to give it out of that. Or there's a program, a heat pump program. Both the econ, out of the Economic Development Fund and the heat pump program requires them to do one hundred percent electric. The heat pump program, they would then re, get a rebate for the size of the heat pumps and things that that they would put in. And it was estimated that that would be around a hundred and seventy five to two hundred thousand. They, they could request that, but you can't request both, or you get the other, which is from the fund. So, you know, the question became, how do, how do we want to disperse? How would we want to disperse the funds? More economical, more reasonable for us to make it a grant out of the economic fund or have them, you know, request rebate underneath the program? And to be viewed, it don't matter, you know, either way, which way the money comes from, so.
And and my inquiry, what was educational for me, and I still don't quite know, along the line of what Tom was explaining, Patrice augmented it, is in the long run, which is better for us as a utility for return on that investment? I mean, if everybody was all, you know, electric, do we capture more revenue even with the rebate?
At a different.
Nine years or whatever. And I still don't know, but I'm still still curious about that, but we did come to.
It showed that the return on investment was very short.
Yeah, like nine months.
Like nine months for the three, that was for the three hundred, the three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Or whatever the, the, three hundred and fifty there.
Three hundred and fifty, yeah. So that, that request is that, that return on investment is after a full requested amount. So anytime you lower that, then it's going to come in.
So the return on investment would be relatively, you know, relatively.
What's what, straight or short? I mean, going beyond that, if we're encouraging, you know, units like this to be all electric, if if their system is is built out, their infrastructure will be with the mindset that they're all electric. But beyond the actual rebate, because they continue the nest, as opposed to going to some other utilities, you know, partial gas, if you will, or whatever else they use, is there some outlawing benefit beyond that, you know, the actual?
Helps us with our winter load. So the more electric heating we get on our system, the more it flattens out that winter load to where it's not dipping as much as it did twenty years ago. And all these units are becoming way more efficient than they were when we started these these programs years ago with heat pumps and other things. And, and so it's really, even though the rates are higher, fishing levels, sea levels are much higher. So that benefits the the community as well. It also helps BP win a, win a revenue.
Again, I guess we're, the point is, what's the, what is the, you know, do we give them the opportunity? Do we say, okay, you can do this?
And. I guess, how does the rest of the board feel that we're going? The, how does the rest of the board?
That's right.
Well, I I'm in favor of the recommendations of both the recommendations that the committee did. And as far as the heat pump situation, I don't, I don't know. Does that have to be settled?
It's, it's, that's part of it. I mean, they have to go all electric, or they don't qualify for the program.
Either way, they have to go all electric.
Oh, okay.
So I thought whether they go the Economic Development Fund or the rebate program.
I got it. Okay.
Now, the question, do we have other, other economic development that we would need those funds for that we would push it towards the?
Not at this point.
This point.
We're halfway through the year, and this is the only ones we've gotten. I'd say.
And there's a total of half million dollars in the fund. So that was one other consideration is, is not to exceed that at me and the combination of both of these projects.
And and one thing we talked about at the, at the meeting, you know, was the fact that these are rental units, you know, being put in out there. And all of those apartments at Village West, all of that development that's going on, they never requested a dime from BPU. And, you know, look, you know, I live out there, so, you know, I know what the development looks like out there, but in his ring knows. And it's a lot. And, I mean, is that where we need to put investment? I mean, that's the thing I asked.
But the question, I think what, I don't know whether, when you dropped off, we talked about this, that they didn't come forward and ask for Economic Development Funds, but they did get funding out of the heat, heat pump rebate program.
They will, if, if this is rejected, then then they can.
Make applications.
We're talking about.
Talking about.
We're talking about the, the other.
Yes.
The Village West.
Yeah.
Or the law, the two thirty seven laws, the other, Rose was talking about, we didn't, we didn't, they didn't come to us and ask for any, no, they didn't. But, you know, they're getting you know.
They're getting money.
The same amount that the other one would would get, so.
And I guess I'd be inclined to give them the same opportunity to do that, though. As, I mean, I just, you know, I think if you don't, I mean, that's housing literally right next to each other. You know, rental housing right next to each other, and I understand there's a different concept to this, but you know, I don't, I don't know why we would deviate from what, why wouldn't we steer them in the direction of the heat pump plan then? Instead of just allocating two hundred thousand dollars to them.
I don't know that we steer anybody in that direction. I mean, it's, I mean, they, they elected to go in that direction themselves and, and and then, of course, the cottages are requesting it through the fund, so.
I think they were requesting more. They might have gone the heat pump.
But in our, in our budget, the heat pump plan is a different line item, is it not?
That's what it's still, same amount of dollars basically for BPU.
How does that line item right now compared to the Economic Development line item?
It's far less than half a million.
Isn't it broken down?
Two hundred and twenty five thousand.
Okay. Is it broken down in some way into two different amounts?
There's the, the one down in D C is another amount on there.
Remember, we asked them to.
Yeah, I think that I've been in the budget when I was studying this, and I can't, okay.
The two hundred and twenty five thousand is kind of historic of what we have done.
With the rebates.
Yeah, with the rebates for the heat.
So if they went that route, that would use up most of that line item this year?
It could possibly use just a minimum of five hundred dollars per unit.
I think we calculated that the other day, it was like seventy five versus two hundred.
One I need to keep in mind is either in the fourth quarter or the first quarter of next year, depending on when the state gets around to it, is the federal government will be issuing a a great deal of funds for the heat pump program. Kind of some of the stuff I've spoke about in the last few months. The feds would offer eight thousand dollars per heat pump to homes and so forth for anybody that's at least at eighty percent of the federal poverty level or four thousand dollars for anybody that's at a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level. So means the vast majority of all income brackets in Kansas, Kansas. So there is a lot more money coming, not directly from BPU, but coming, so.
Okay, so when this is presented, we're voting, I need to know what we're voting on exactly.
So you want, you want to vote next board meeting?
The recommendations by the committee. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the recommendation of the committee was.
Was a hundred thousand for the YLOs, two hundred thousand.
Cottages.
Cottages, okay.
Cottages decided that they want to withdraw their Economic Development request and go to.
I'm pretty sure they're not. They're emailing me every other day asking where.
But I mean, I mean, but they could, and then, and then get reimbursed through the heat pump.
That could be put in your resolution, Tom. Yes, that could be put in your resolution, that if they decide they want to go with the heat pump program, then we will just not move forward with.
I move approval of the recommendation.
In light of the fact that we still have some time, because of this discussion, I know we're going to be promulgating better ideas with the board here, are there any recommendations?
Thank you. Because I can.
Anything else that you want to, or the larger, or those from the three that weren't on that, you know, from.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with what the board came up, I mean, what the committee came up with. That will leave some money in case we get another request before the end of twenty four.
Do you want to put any stipulations? Because I couldn't add those to the resolutions, if you want any.
Just keep it simple.
Yeah, if they're going to choose to go the other route, I want to know that within ten business days. So we know which, I mean, which way they're going.
The thing is, is that they can only go.
There are two different budget line items.
What I'm saying that.
I mean, right? So.
It's still, it's still cash or money that BP is paying, no matter if it's coming out of this budget or this budget. It's still.
And the thing is that the requests have been made, and they have chosen to go this route. So if for them not to go this route, I mean, we'd have to deny them going this route, is that correct?
Yes.
So I need to put in here, though, that once, they can only go one route.
That's, I thought that was.
I thought it mattered. Yeah, that's understood.
Let me leave the board with this. The board can, if something else comes up, if there is another need for that, the board can also do a budget transfer. We can also add money into the fund, okay?
We haven't done any of those the last couple of years.
Um, I got.
I mean, the board has.
Okay. So there is, there is one other project that I want to talk about. Not looking for any answers or decisions tonight, but Junior College sent me and Jeremy an email the other day. Request, so first of all, I did have to tell Dr. Moser that the Economic Development Fund that the board approved for the downtown KCK campus, Junior College Campus, did not move forward because he told me after the board approved that that he was not going to go all electric. So so now he's asking for if that money could be used as an in kind donation to the project for offsetting some of the costs of connecting utilities. So I can send you the email, I can and then we can talk about it, you know, at the next meeting, if you want to move forward with that or not, at least I'll get, I can get the email.
Was that dollar amount?
Two thirty seven?
Yeah.
That's what they asked for?
That's what they're asking for.
We previously allocated two twenty five, two fifty.
Two fifty. So I did ask Engineering to go back and take a look at the email that that I got to make sure that that it was accurate and that that information was passed from BPU to them, just so there's nothing. I don't want to ask you to pat, to agree to something that there may be question marks about, so.
Have we done, is anything comparable to that in the past, like in kind for a non-all project or anything like?
So the all electric, the all electric for Economic Development was just recently approved by the board. So in the past, it was not always all electric.
Well, and and we're all talking about, you know, how important it is to see the ROI numbers, and the ROI number on that project was, you know, like this. It's right for the, for the amount of money that was allocated. So to me, the ROI is much more important than the all electric. I understand, you know, the greater concern, but, yeah.
But it's the whole concept of that being downtown.
Absolutely.
Our recommendation would be if the numbers, if if Engineering submitted this calls, then my recommendation would be to approve it, so. Okay. Just wanted to bring up speed before you saw.
Thank you. You're, we sending something out to us on that?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me have Engineering validate that the information is correct.
We've known for a while.
Tuition. And your taxes.
We're in the middle of it.
Yeah. Uh, I have a vote to adjourn.
I moved.
It's removed and seconded that we adjourned the work session. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brennaman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Quakes. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Let the, let the record show that Senator Haley did, did show up.
Thanks.